Hi, the Futuro San Antonio Family Advocacy Team. My name is Regina Guevara. My children attend Great Hearts and SA ISD schools. I am also a parent leader at Futuro, a nonprofit in our city that envisions a San Antonio where every zip code has equitable access to world-class public education. Driven by the voices of students and families to create lasting community prosperity, we are proud that this forum will be 100% parent-led, highlighting the power of family voice in shaping our community's future. I will be chairing this forum today. We want to take a moment to thank Northwest Vista College for hosting us tonight. And I want to also thank members of the Futuro Family Advocacy Team for being here tonight to help put on this event. If you're a member of the team or have worked with our team before, please go ahead now District 6 in San Antonio educates the most public school students in our city, so we are very excited to host this event tonight and give families in the community the opportunity to meet their candidates and hear their plan for our community and their vision for public education. While the city council does not directly oversee public schools, we believe that when our leaders support public education, they send the message that our youth, the future of this city, truly matter. I want to thank each of you in the audience for attending tonight. We know that united, we can send the message that our children's education and the future of our beautiful city of San Antonio matter. Now, I will share with you the agreements of the forum and our rules. Candidates, I want to thank each of you for being here tonight. We look forward to learning more about each of you, your campaigns and your vision for District 6 in San Antonio. This meeting is organized by families for families. We are here today because we care passionately about the future of our kids and our communities, and we believe that the future of our city lies in our ability to ensure every child's academic success. We have a very full agenda, and we want to respect everyone's time. For that reason, only those in the agenda and recognized by me, the chairperson, may speak. This is not an open forum or a debate. Thank you for your support in helping us make this a positive event that will end on time. This forum is not seated in no particular order, and the order of how they answer questions will be randomized. Tonight, candidates will be answering a total of five questions, and will have one minute to provide an answer for each question. Candidates receive the first three questions in advance, and our last two questions will come from the audience. Thank you to everyone who submitted a question in the online RSVP form or anyone who submitted a question earlier today in the question boxes in the foyer. Now, one of our parent leaders, Janet, will read our Futuro team credential.
My name is Janet, and I'm a mother of two who attend pre-luprep. I will be reading our team's credentials tonight. We are parents, families and community members that represent public ISD schools and public charter schools from around our great city. We have united to show our strength as a community because we care about our kids and the future of our city. As parents and advocates, we do not think it's acceptable that only 36% of third graders in District 6 are meeting grade level standards and core subjects, or that less than half of all third through eighth graders in San Antonio are reading at grade level. We believe that everyone deserves access to a high-quality public education, no matter what their background is or what neighborhood they live in. We are making sure our voices and our experiences as parents and families are heard so that our local leaders put children and their education first.
Thank you, Janet. At Futuro, we know that people's stories matter. So next, we'll have a member of our team, Mira Carrier, share her testimony about her experience with the education system in San Antonio and the journey that led her to Futuro.
Good evening. My name is Mira Alejandra Carrier, and I'm a proud member of the District 6 community. A first-generation high school and college graduate, a U.S. Army veteran of 10 years, and the founder of a nonprofit dedicated to education and mental health advocacy for students across South Texas. But tonight, I stand before you as a mother, a mother who, like many others, simply wants the best for her child. My son attended an ISD school three minutes away from our home. He is bright, curious, and a part of the Gifted and Talented Program. Yet neither the program nor the school created an environment where he could thrive. Each day, he came home discouraged, his spark dimming. No matter how hard we tried to make it work, it became clear. The system was built to support him in the way that he needed. For example, he would finish his work quickly and ask for more challenging assignments, but instead of being encouraged, he was told to sit quietly and wait for the rest of the class to catch up. He often felt unseen, as if his curiosity was an inconvenience rather than a strength. Despite being in the Gifted and Talented Program, there were a few opportunities for him to truly engage in deeper learning or explore subjects that excited him. Over the time, his love for learning faded, and he started dreading school, a place that should have inspired him. As a parent, making the choice to pull him out of that school was heartbreaking, but it was necessary. I had the privilege of homeschooling him last year while we searched for a better fit. It was a year filled with uncertainty, but also discovery, one that reinforced what I already knew. Every child deserves an education where they feel seen, supported, and challenged in ways that make them grow. After careful consideration, we chose to enroll our son at Promesa Academy Charter School in the West Side. It wasn't the easiest of choices. It meant longer commutes, extra hours in traffic before and after school, but the sacrifice has been worth it. Today, my son comes home excited to share what he's learned, eager to tell me more about his teachers and friends, and most importantly, he feels seen, safe, and valued in his community at school. The week before spring break, he came home beaming with excitement. He had tried out for his school soccer team and made it. His confidence soared, and he couldn't wait to be a part of something bigger. Beyond soccer, he's found joy in many school clubs where he truly feels a sense of belonging. And now, he's also an all-A honor roll student, proving to himself that hard work and dedication pay off. Seeing him thrive academically, socially, and personally reassures me that we made the right choice. This is what every parent hopes for, yet many families in District 6 feel unheard and find themselves without enough options, having to make do with schools that may not fully meet their child's needs. Families deserve to have their voices heard and access to schools that truly support their children's success. Education is not a one-size-fits-all. Every child deserves a school where they feel challenged, supported, and valued, regardless of their zip code. We need leaders in District 6 who understand that behind every policy, every funding decision, and every vote, there are real children, real families, and real futures at stake. As a veteran, I know the power of leadership that truly listens and takes action. I urge every candidate here tonight, listen to the parents, listen to the educators, but most importantly, listen to the students. They are more than just numbers on our report. They are our future, and they deserve more than just words. They deserve real commitment, real investment, and real change.
Thank you, Mira, for sharing your story. Now, we will move into the questions portion of our forum. During the questions portion of our event, a Futuro team member will come up one by one to read the questions to the candidates. Here at the podium, we have a box with the names of all the candidates. For each question, we will pull a name out of the box, and this is who will get us started with answering the question. We will move then in a clockwise direction until everyone has answered. For example, I will pull out a card now, and so Candidate Lopez will answer first, and then the person to their left, and eventually, we will start at the beginning of the table until we reach the first person again. Does that make sense, candidates? All right. Thank you. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question. I, as the chairperson, will be tracking time, and will cut your speaking time if the one minute has been exceeded. Please be respectful of other people's time. A member of our team will be flagging time from the audience. Deanna, thank you. Now, we will ask our first question. We will hear from one of our parent leaders, Tina.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Tina Cruz Carruthers. I'm a mother of three scholars. Two of the scholars attend Idea Public School and Frein High Elementary. The first question tonight is, candidates, can you please introduce yourself and share key priorities of your campaign for District 6 and San Antonio as a whole?
Okay. Good question. My name is Gerald Lopez. Currently, I am a trustee for Alamo Colleges. I am the only candidate in the race that has been elected three times, two to the school board and one to Alamo Colleges. And the foundation of my campaign has been education. And it is my hopes, it is actually my willingness and my dedication as a servant leader for the past 10 years is to make education the forefront of our district in San Antonio. To mention earlier, I was disappointed that District 6 was ranked fourth in the city council when it came to literacy. That hurts me, and I want to do something about that. And it has been my focus to work on education as a priority, because not only is it education that we're going to thrive as a city, we're going to prosper. And it is important to me, and I believe it's important to all of you who are here today. And I just want to say thank you to Dr. Amy Bosley for allowing us to have this forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll hear from Kellyanne Gonzalez.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to be here. I know that it was a struggle to get through that traffic on 151. My name is Kellyanne Gonzalez. In 2018, I lost my older brother, Coco, to suicide. He left behind two small children, my niece and nephew, then aged three and seven years old. This personal tragedy pushed me not just to mourn, but to take action. I began advocating for mental health services, particularly for our school-aged children, because I saw firsthand how our system was failing us. Black and Latino students are being left behind by systemic inequities in education and mental health services. Through my work in labor, I have built power from the ground up. Most recently, I empowered city workers and overturned a 72-year political prohibition on city employees. I know what it takes to organize, advocate, and win real change for our communities. As a first-generation American and a daughter of District 6, I am running to empower families, workers, and students by elevating their voices and demanding accountability.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. That's time.
Thank you.
Now, we hear from Carlos Raymond.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carlos Antonio Raymond. I've got three first names, Carlos, Antonio, and Raymond. I am running for San Antonio City Council District Number 6. I'm a first-generation immigrant and a retiree of the United States Military, the United States Army, a realtor, and a proud member of the Church of Christ. My faith is the guiding force behind every decision I make. I know firsthand what it means to face adversity. I was raised in a family of 18 siblings. From an early age, I dealt with health challenges, poverty, and academic struggles. I know what it feels like to walk into school hungry, to be told I would never amount to anything, and to be discouraged by others who doubted my potential. Despite the challenges I faced, including being diagnosed with respiratory bronchial asthma and being told I had the IQ of a four-year-old, but I persevered, and I was forced to repeat high school all over again, starting from the sixth grade. But instead of giving up, I've found joy in learning and growing up and growing with younger students, and at the end, I graduated with honors.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond.
Thank you.
We'll hear from Rick Gonzalez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out tonight, and thank you to Futuro and Northwest Vista College for having this forum here for all of us to talk more about what the future of our city could look like in our district as well. My name is Rick Galván. I am running for San Antonio City Council District 6. I was born and raised in the district, in the Pipers Meadow neighborhood, where I currently serve as neighborhood association president for the neighborhood I grew up in. I'm a proud product of our public schools here in Northside ISD, graduating from Holmes High School, going from Myers, then to Jordan, and I went on to go to UT Austin to earn my bachelor's degree. Currently, I work as a city council staff member, serving as a policy director, working with constituents one-on-one to make sure we're getting the things that we need at the ground level, right? Street signs, addressing garbage issues, but also the policy level, right? With the city council committees and the city council actual actions and policies that support working families. I'm running for city council because I am committed to fighting for working families and ensuring that our city is a safe, affordable, and quality place to live in for all of us for generations to come, and I am proud to be the only candidate committed to not taking a cent of corporate real estate PAC dollars to my campaign.
Thank you, Mr. Galván. Now, we'll hear from Chris Baker.
My name is Chris Becker. Thank you all for coming. Thank you to Futuro for hosting this, and thank you to Northwest Vista for hosting this. I teach Algebra II and Economics to eighth graders just up the road at Basis Middle School. I've been teaching Economics here at Northwest Vista, part-time at night, for 10 years, and you'll have to excuse me because I need to bolt out of here in about 20 or 25 minutes because we're having our final exam tonight. I am the father of four beautifully distinguished daughters who have all gone to NISD schools K through 12. They've all been at least in the top 1.5% to 2% at Earl Warren. One of them was in the top 11%. So, education obviously is important to me. My top priorities for the district are to put a cap on the ridiculously high property taxes and have more respect for small business owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we hear from Ms. Vanessa Chavez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. My name is Vanessa Chavez, and I am running for city council, District 6. I am a proud daughter of District 6. I was born into District 6 over in Westwood Village. I am the daughter of a Korean War veteran and a stay-at-home mom, the youngest of seven, who instilled in me the value of hard work, service, and community. I'm a graduate of Providence High School, St. Edward's University in 1994. I have two amazing sons that I put through college as a single mom. One is a UTSA Roadrunner, and one is a UT Longhorn. I'm currently a regional enrollment manager at Idea Public Schools and very proud of that. I also have a 30-year public service career in city council. I've worked for six city council members, two congressmen, and a state senator, and I've also worked on the departmental side of the city. So, I will bring with me all of that experience, and I will know exactly what to do if elected in a council office and how to make sure your requests and your needs are met. And education is very important to me. I'm a first-gen graduate, and my kids are on their way to going to graduate school soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Now, we'll hear from Lawson Alanis Picasso.
Thank you so much. And again, I just wanted to give a round of applause for our parents and the Futuro San Antonio for putting this on. Can we please give a round of applause for the parents? My name is Lawson Alanis Picasso, and I'm running to be your next city councilwoman for District 6. A minute, it goes by really fast, so I am going to really speed through the introductions, really put a point on the fact that I am a mom of a 10-year-old who goes to Eleanor Collett's Hebrew Language Academy, a charter school here in San Antonio, and I am a product of the public school system. I want to really talk about the prioritizations for District 6 in the city of San Antonio because I have global experience with a local commitment to understanding how urban planning and master design looks like for communities. And I want to ensure that we have an advocate and a champion who knows how to address the dollars to make sure that they're working for us, that we look at a budget as a moral document, and we're really being strategic with how we plan for our families and communities that need it most. As an advocate and somebody with a lived experience, I know how to look for this. I know how to be that champion, and I can't wait to continue to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Picasso. Now, we hear from Bobby, Mr. Bobby Herrera.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bobby Herrera. I'm the only one up here that has the experience as a city council member. I'm a prior city councilman. After that, I joined the Navy, served overseas, came back, went to school. I've been here practically all my life. I've advocated for District 6. I grew up in the bad, I would say, the bad part of town, the embattled area. I went to Las Palmas Elementary, Edgewood Junior High, and then to Kennedy High School. While I was on council, I learned how to write and read and dictate to the managers of the city of San Antonio. I just retired with U.S. Texas Representatives, Texas State House, not State House, Congressional House. I was an advocate there for many years. I decided to call it quits, and Mr. Gonzalez was telling me, "Please don't retire. Stay here." My job right now, I help veterans run from 20% to 70, 80% if I can. I guide them the right way.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Now, we'll hear from Mr. Gerald Lopez. Oh, sorry. You started us. That was me. Thank you so much for doing that with us, and thank you for making it respectful and on time. Now, we will hear from our next question, and that'll be read by Alyssa.
Thank you, Regina. Good evening. My name is Alyssa, and I am a senior at Texas Tech University High School. District 6 educates the most public school students in our city, about 31,000 traditional public ISD students and public charter school students. Earlier in this program, we shared data about student performance in District 6 and San Antonio overall. Futuro San Antonio has also run a poll where it's found that only 15% of respondents believe the city council is adequately supporting education. Our second question of the night is, if elected, what specifically would you do to improve educational opportunities for District 6 students? We'll get started with Candidate Chavez. So, that means Ms. Chavez, you will answer the first question, and then the person to your left will answer it. I'll repeat our question. If elected, what specifically would you do to improve educational opportunities for District 6 students? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. So, those results are expected, and I believe they're expected by all of us because the state doesn't fund public school education fully the way they should. And so, if I'm elected, I will work locally with our community. I will work with them, find ways to improve our local instructional programming, and implement that into my council office. There's a brand-new field office over on Tezal, and I would use that as a pilot hub to bring in a study that was done in 2005 and 2019 with the city council office, where they actually paid teachers out of a CCPF city council fund to make sure that students who needed the help were tutored. And that made an exceptional difference, and I would look at doing that kind of instructional supplemental programming and make sure that we are on the Texas legislative agenda, and we hold them true to what they should be doing, and that's paying for our public school education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Now, we hear from Ms. Lawson Alanis Picasso.
Thank you so much for this question. I'm really excited about this because I always talk about, why are we reinventing the wheel when we know that there's organizations that are really doing the work and advocating to bring access to resources to our students? I don't think that students should be limited on what type of resources they get when it comes to mental health services, when it comes to access to education empowerment services. Regardless of what school they go to, they should have those resources. My mom's best friend, Gracie, is here with us, and the people that work with her, they do a lot to bring free education programs that are accessible to anybody. All you got to do is just ask your school to have them come in. The folks that are here with Futuro San Antonio are parent advocates. They do things by partnering and bringing a network together, by bringing collective ideas and ecosystems to be really a champion for the students, regardless of where they're at or where they're learning. So, my job as a city councilperson is going to be to really cultivate and be the lobbyist for those types of relationships to ensure that we are bringing the type of access to resources that benefit every student regardless where they're at. We also, to the point, and I agree with Ms. Chavez here, we need to be championing at a state level. We need to be a little more gavrona with that, and I'm ready to do that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson Alanis Picasso. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Bobby Herrera.
This is all about communication. If we don't communicate with our state representatives, to our Texas senators, it's not going to get anywhere. It's all about open lines, getting in contact with them. I mean, here, we have public schools, we have private schools, we have charter schools, we have trade schools. It doesn't matter what school we have as long as our child is out there trying to learn a trade or learn what's in the system, what we teach them, and it all starts at home. Anybody here can have a problem at home. We have problems at home. But it all boils down to communication with our state representatives, Texas senators, all the way up to the House. And I'm talking about the U.S. House. It all funnels down. If there's no communication between, we're not going to get anywhere. We need to open doors, open doors the right way, and communicate the right way to those guys up there.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. I'm going to go ahead and repeat the question, and we'll hear from Gerald Lopez. The question is, if you're elected, what specifically would you do to improve the educational opportunities for District 6 students?
That's a great question, and thank you for that. First of all, it's a matter of what we're going to prioritize when it comes to education. When we talk about literacy, which was mentioned earlier, you know, we have to look at the family, the circumstances that the family has occurred, that's going on with the family and with the student. One of the things that I'm interested in is creating a literacy program for District 6, right? The pilot program will be for District 6, and that's a partnership with all our campuses, charter schools, ISDs, homeschools. Bring everybody in. It's about including people. So, that would be one of the things that I would like to do and start is bring people, bring literacy, and help bring that literacy rate up. I would also like to look at how the city funds after-school programs, specifically in our campuses, because it's generally where we have some of the gaps is going to be in after-school programs, where we should be having, where we're paying for assistance or we're paying for staff to tutor those students as they're waiting for the parents to come in. But that's one of the things I would be doing. Thank you.
Now, we're going to hear from Kellyanne Gonzalez.
I believe the first part of the question was, what was our reaction to the data that we were given? And honestly, I'm not surprised. When I graduated from John Jay High School in 2008, I graduated alongside people that I knew could not read at a sixth-grade reading level. Creating opportunities for young people is key to breaking the cycles of poverty. By lowering the ready-to-work age requirements here in the city, we can provide career and technical educational programs for our high school students, equipping them with the skills that they need to thrive in our communities. Another concrete step that we can take to ensure that we are addressing our inequities in education here in the city is creating a city liaison that works across all public schools. They can be the direct communication, collaboration, and make sure that we are identifying gaps in resources, risks, and that we are tailoring our responses to each school's individual and unique needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Now, we hear from Carlos Antonio Raymond.
Hello. When I first heard that there are sixth graders and eighth graders, math and reading scores are below average, that brought tears to my eyes. I'm not here to pinpoint to anyone, but I want to build a coalition of fighters like myself. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I'm a fighter, and I don't want to give up on any child. No child is going to be left behind. When I become city councilmember, I want to build a coalition, and I want to collaborate with fighters to help raise the scores of our children. These are the future of our, these are the kids of our future. And with the growth that is taking place in San Antonio, how are they going to be prepared to take advantage of the... to take advantage of this growth? So I want to get involved. I want to work with the Independent School District, the Northside Independent School District, and help build, raise these kids to where they can function in society. Without an education, it is horrible. I know firsthand what it's like not to have an education.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Now we need to hear from Mr. Rick Gonzalez.
Thank you so much for the question. Yeah, some of the biggest things that I think we should do at the city council level to ensure that we are supporting public education here in our city is, one, making sure that we are supporting our pre-K for SA program and continuing to expand it throughout our city so that all of our students have access to high-quality pre-K education, early childhood education, no matter where they live in our city. Same goes on the opposite end, right? Making sure that our Alamo Promise Program also is expanded so that no matter when you graduated, as long as you are here in our city, that you have access and you are able to go and seek the path to higher education without cost being a barrier. And then making sure that our city council office works directly with our ISDs, our PTAs, our teacher unions, our neighbor associations, our homeowner associations, and other folks focused on advocating for our public schools. I am committed to having a council staffer who is a liaison to all those pieces and to make sure that we are working together hand in hand. Even if that means I gotta go up to Austin like I did last week with Northside AFT to advocate for school funding here in our city and to reject school voucher programs like they're trying to propose now. Thank you.
And now we hear from Chris Speaker.
At a recent forum, I had a mom come up to me with her daughter asking what could be done because the high school, which happens to be the high school my girls go to, was not working with her accommodations. These are like 504s and IEPs, these are things that I deal with every day. And I told her what I could do. The first thing I would do is send an email to our local trustee and the principal of that school and ask them, what is the holdup? Why is this child not being accommodated like she is supposed to be? And then I would follow up with a call the next day, a visit to the board of trustees with him, and even a visit to the school to bring pressure on them to do their job, to do what they are taxing us for as much as they can because they are falling short with at least this child. By the way, when I have to take off, I will be in Juniper 203. You can come visit me. My kids will be taking a final. They won't be, I won't be teaching or anything, so just go park in the Mancinio Hall and I'll be there.
Now we'll hear from our next parent leader. We will have Monique asking our next question.
My name is Monique Sanchez. I have two kids at Promesa Academy and one attending IDEA Judson. San Antonio offers a diverse range of public education options for families. There are approximately 252,000 public school students in our city. About one in four students attend an in-district charter or public charter school. The third question tonight is, will you be a champion for all public school students, including those in our public charter schools? We will start with Mr. Herrera.
Yes, definitely. That's what I mentioned earlier, whether it's a trade school, charter school, whatever public school, every child, every child should be fed the same way, brought up a certain way as far as education is concerned. The teachers, we all know they're underpaid. Some teachers give in, some teachers don't. But it starts at home again. Depends what they do. You gotta take them off those iPads. You have to take those kids off those iPads and start opening up books. That's the only way they're going to learn. And I know it's the new technology, but still, you have to groom your child a certain way in order to groom them the way they're supposed to be groomed. And like I said before, education is a big thing. I made my boy go to DBU. He graduated. I said, nope, you're going back for your masters. He went back for his masters and now he's going for his PhD. It's all about how you guide him.
Now we'll hear from Mr. Lopez.
Yes, I will support in-school charters, I mean, in charter schools. It is, for me, what it is, it's the importance of the choice that you as parents make. You know your child. You know what's best for your child. Who am I to tell you where you should put your kids at? It's not my choice, but it's up to you. So to me, that's the important thing, is your choice, your opportunity for your child to be successful.
Thank you. Now we hear from Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes, because every child matters. Behind every child, there is a dream and there is a goal for a future and we need to make sure that we are supporting that child and that family the best way that we can. Every child has a story. Behind every student is a family making thoughtful choices and at some times sacrifices, sacrificing their own dreams to make sure that their children has those educational opportunities that they need to thrive. Families should have the freedom to choose whatever schools that they think is best for their children to achieve their goals and their educational promise. Public education is the foundation of our city's success. When you exclude our public charter schools from certain fundings, let's be real about who you are excluding. You are excluding Black and Latino children from the lower socioeconomic status. We need to make sure that we are investing in every single student in every single school because that is our job as city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we hear from Mr. Raymond.
Absolutely. I mentioned earlier that I'm a champion, I'm a fighter. And day one, when I, once I become elected to the city council District Six, I've already started to fight. And I'm meeting with about eight stakeholders. So far, over the last six years, I've been going door-to-door. I've knocked on about 10,000 doors and I talked with you, the parent, and the teachers about children. You have a stake in your child's development and whether it is public school, charter school, or a private school, you have that choice. And I want to make sure, I wanted to make sure that our kids are number one. And once elected, this is going to be my top priority, to help our kids, develop our kids in the way they should go. And that will be my fight.
Thank you. Mr. Galván, I am going to read the question one more time just for you. Sorry, just so we're answering the same question. Will you be a champion for all public schools, including those in our public charter schools?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Absolutely. I mean, all of our residents and our students deserve to live in neighborhoods that are safe, affordable, and quality place to live in and that have quality education here in our city as well. As I said before, as a proud product of Northside ISD schools here in District Six and as a proud son, nephew, and grandson of educators in Northside ISD, Edgewood ISD, and SA ISD, I have always passionate and committed to fighting for public education here in our city and across our state to ensure that our city, our residents, and our students get the world-class education that they deserve here. Also because of that commitment, I am proud to be endorsed by the organized teachers and staff personnel of Northside ISD and SA ISD AFT because I know what it takes to advocate for these issues, to work together and collaborate with folks in our community, with teachers and parents and families alike to get these things done. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we hear from Mr. Baker.
I absolutely support publicly funded education. I'm the product of it. All four of my daughters are the product of it. I have one that's about to graduate UT in May and another one that's about to graduate Texas State next year. I am in it. So I do absolutely support the funding of charter schools as well. Every, I'm a firm believer of equality of opportunity. The most vulnerable demographic we have out there is our kids. And that was proven a few years ago with the egregious lockdowns that we all went through. So I'm absolutely a supporter of this. Again, I'm about to head out to Juniper 203. Please stop by if you'd like to. I'll be there till 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. The next two questions are from the audience. They are questions that stood out to our team or which...
Excuse me? We still have to do it.
I am so sorry. That is me. So yes, I would absolutely support the funding of charter schools. I'm an employee at IDEA Public School District and I see daily all of the wonderful things that happen there. And I support public schools. My two sons are products of public schools and I'm a product of a Catholic school. So, you know, it's about meeting the children where they are and having the resources available to them so that they can achieve and do well and move on and go to college and succeed. Other than that, I just feel like we need to make sure that we have programs in the city that our city council are coming up with and implementing so that we can make sure that these kids get what they need. And if that means opening libraries up for later extended hours so that these kids can go in there and have it as a study hub, let's do that. Those are really important things that we can look at doing to help kids, especially the kids who don't have what other kids have. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not forgetting you, Ms. Lawson Picasso.
Thank you so much. And thank you for emphasizing public charter schools because I think one of the things that I really want to do and will be an advocate for is really educating people that Texas only has public charter schools. And yes, I would be an advocate for all public schools. Reason why is because my grandfather was a proud valedictorian of Beville Mexican High School where he was one of three. And he had to drive 20 miles in order for him to even finish his high school education and then even had to get state representatives to sign off for him to get a higher education at UT Austin. I understand what it's like to go through adverse issues and adverse times just to even get a education. And so as a champion for education and a champion for access to education, I am going to be the one at the front line because I understand that I am here today and I am a product of not having, of having so much red tape for a brown person like me to have access to those resources. And our community still faces adversity today for those that need it most. So for me, I am a champion for public schools because I am a mom and I'm a champion for everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Picasso. The next two questions are from the audience. They are questions that stood out to our team or which we saw mentioned many times from the attendees and people who sent in their RSVP. Thank you to everyone that submitted a question for our program. Frances, one of our parent leaders, will read our next question.
My name is Frances Gallardo and I am a mom of three children who attend Lanier High School, one who attends Young Men's Leadership Academy, and another who attends Promesa Academy. I will be reading our fourth question coming from the audience in Spanish and English. ¿Cómo trabajaría para garantizar que los estudiantes se sienten seguros en sus escuelas? ¿Incluya la protección contra la violencia armada, las deportaciones de ICE, y otras amenazas a su bienestar? Now in English. How would you work to ensure that the students feel safe in their schools, including protection from gun violence, ICE deportations, and other threats to their well-being? And we would start with Mr. Galván.
Thank you so much for the question to the folks who asked it out in the audience. As we know, it is critical that our kids are safe at school, no matter what the issue is, right? But we know now more than ever, the issue of gun violence has plagued our schools. I mean, my generation has grown up with lockdown drills, right? Going to homes, high school is an open campus. I know what it feels like to try to get an education while also having to do lockdowns because someone's going by with a gun, either from the nearby businesses or mall or whatever, the neighborhoods as well. To ensure that our folks are safe and sound, our students are safe and sound in the schools that they attend and can get the quality education that they deserve, it is critical that our city works together with SAPD along with our community health workers to ensure that our neighborhoods nearby are taken care of and are not engaging in these violent activities. And if they are, then we work diligently to break those cycles of crime and violence at their roots. That means also supporting mental health services and our violence interrupter teams as well throughout our city. And that's what I'm committed to doing if elected.
Thank you. Now we hear from Vanessa Chavez.
Hello.
Sorry. It's Mr. Baker was next, but he's no longer here.
Okay, thank you. So I would just ensure that we have ongoing training for our teachers to ensure that they know exactly what they need to do in those situations. I would also ensure that we continue to do those lockdown drills and that the kids know that, you know, this is a drill, but along with that, offer counseling, offer mental health services for them. It can be tough for a kid to have to go through those things on a regular basis. So I think that with, you know, ensuring that we have those regular trainings and incorporating that into the curriculum and just making the child understand that it's a drill and letting them know that they are cared for and that we are going to protect them at all costs.
Thank you. Before we move on to Ms. Alanis Picasso, I do want to make a special announcement. Thank you, parents, so much for showing up in strong numbers. We're about 2:30 right now, so we just appreciate you being here and we know what traffic's like and dinner and everything else, so round of applause for all of you. I'll go ahead and read the question again. I know I see these people shuffling about, coming in and out of the room. How would you work to ensure that the students feel safe in their schools, including protection from gun violence, ICE deportations, and other threats to their well-being? You can continue, Ms. Picasso.
Thank you so much. I want to share an experience that my son and I had recently. We went to a major event where we were surprised with an agitator that was there and my son went into a reaction of his gun, his active shooter drill, even though there wasn't an active shooting, but he thought that there was. And I had to calm him down and then he started hyperventilating and panicking because he thought that he was unsafe. And then I realized and I asked, I said, well, don't you have a counselor at school? And he said, no. And I talked to the principal and I realized that charter schools don't have to have access to counseling, which is why I go back to our resources and those programs and the services that do offer counseling to students that go to charter schools. And we need to make sure that regardless of what school they go to, they have access to those things. Because now we are putting them in these situations where they have ICE and they have gun violence and they have all these different threats that are going out to them. And so for me, it's about really prioritizing the students and their mental well-being while also ensuring that we don't just ask the teachers to be the catch-all for everything and we support them too because it is hard to be an educator today.
Thank you, Ms. Alanis Picasso. Now we hear from Mr. Bobby Herrera. You can go, Mr. Herrera. Yes, sir.
Again, we're back to square one, again, talking about education rights. I thought we were going to talk about tax exemptions and property taxes and things like that, but we're talking about education.
Sorry. Mr. Herrera, I'm going to redirect you. This is a family advocacy forum and our platform is about the education of our children and that was part of our announcement when we invited each candidate and we sent the questions. So we would appreciate you sticking to our agenda. I can read the question for you again.
And I understand where you're coming from.
Can I read the question for you?
No, you don't have to repeat it.
Okay, yes, sir.
It's okay. I understand education is a big part of kids' lives nowadays. Yes, we should better the programs, but it's up to the school boards and superintendents. I'm all for upgradings, yes. And as far as deportations, I can't talk much about it because I worked for ICE at one point in time. But please understand, they're not after the kids here. What they're after is bad people. And these kids are not bad people. They want to be educated here.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. We will continue with Mr. Gerald Lopez.
Thank you. You know, first and foremost, the city's role when it comes to, when it comes to development, it's about permitting. And when I was on the board for Northside, one of the things that we were able to do was, the priority for us was securing our campuses first and foremost. That was the physical, the facility itself. What we did is we designed and we implemented and we built into our budget when it came to planning for the future bonds. to planning for the future bonds, we built in the availability of putting in a security vestibule that would secure the hard front doors. What we found was you had to stop them from coming in first before anything else. Then you also are implementing the active shooter program. So it was a combination of that. Where the city can help is from a permitting perspective, is by processing, speeding up those processes to allow for those developments to occur within our school campuses.
I believe that one of the ways that we can help our students feel safe in schools is by expanding our city's crossing guard program to include every single public school in our city. That way, the very first face that every child sees when they come into school is a crossing guard helping them get to school safely. Another thing that we can do is, sorry, for the ICE concerns, we need to make sure that every single student and child and school is aware of their rights when it comes to that process. And that is a job that our city liaison that I want to create to coordinate through all of our public schools can do. Another thing that we need to do is expand our mental health services. It is a tragedy that we have school shootings, but the fact of the matter is sometimes it is students themselves. We need to make sure that every single child in our schools has access to quality mental health services. Thank you.
Now we'll hear from Mr. Carlos Antonio Raymond.
Hello. The question is about school safety and ICE? Is that the question?
Yes, I can repeat it for you. So how would you work to ensure that students feel safe in their schools, including protection from gun violence, ICE deportations, and other threats to their wellbeing?
Thank you very much for that question. School safety is one of the primary reasons I got involved in politics. School safety is one of the reasons why I run it for city council. If you remember Uvalde, I was one of the first civilian in Uvalde coming from Rio Grande. My Vietnam friends living in Uvalde called me and said, "Carlos Antonio, we had a shootout." Myself and about 30 Vietnam veterans got involved. From there on, we've been volunteering at public schools, at elementary school to ensure safety, that this will never happen again. And that is the reason why I'm involved in city council to make sure that our kids are safe in school. That's number one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Mr. Galván.
Am I going again? I don't mind. Just asking. It's okay.
I'm taken aback by some commentary. Please forgive me.
You're good.
Our last question will be, thank you guys. Our last question will be read by one of our parent leaders, Kristi.
Thank you, Regina. You are doing an amazing job.
My name is Kristi Ratliff. I'm a proud mom of three KIPsters that attend KIP Somos Collegiate, KIP Esperanza, and KIP Aspire. The next question is also an audience question that was brought to our attention this evening, so this is a fresh question. And this will be the last question for our program this evening. The question is, what external factors do you believe could be affecting low performance or creating apathy in our high schools? And we will start with Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Can you repeat the question again?
What external factors do you believe could be affecting low performance and apathy in our high schools?
I am a first-generation American. My parents came to this country because of the educational opportunities that were provided here for me and my siblings. And so I know firsthand what it's like to have a mixed-status family. And I know that right now, it is troubling times for a lot of our families and students that have mixed-status. And not knowing whether your parents are going to be home when you get out of school is something that I have lived through and I know that many of our students right now are facing that same worry. I believe that one of the ways that we can address this is, I have said, as I have said before, we need to create a city liaison position that can coordinate communication across all of our public schools. Our children need to know that as a city, we are prioritizing education and their educational opportunities. Because honestly, I believe that our children don't feel that right now because it's true. We're not as a city, we just are not. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Mr. Carlos Antonio Raymond.
One more time, the question.
Yes, sir. What external factors do you believe could be affecting low performance or apathy in our high schools?
That's a very, very good question. It was just last night, I was thinking, the teachers, our teachers are stressed out. Teachers are underpaid. As a member of the city council, I want to advocate for pay for our teachers. I want to bring back retired teachers. I wanted to bring back retired teachers and pay them an adequate salary so that they could be comfortable. We have single mothers that are working and trying to make ends meet and working two, three jobs per day. They don't have time when they come home to attend to their kids. And I want to have a program where we can assist these parents so that they don't have to work two and three jobs to make ends meet and they can spend adequate time with their kids. When the kids come home, mommy and dad needs to be home and I understand the dilemma they face. So basically, funding for teachers is going to be a priority. Thank you.
Now we'll hear from Mr. Galván.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think one of the biggest things that really impacts our students, regardless of what kind of school they go to, is of course the environment that they grow up in, right? It's not just the physical environment that of course can be an impact, but also their socioeconomic backgrounds can be a key issue, right? Whether we think about parents working multiple jobs, whether they're not home at night, right? Or they're not there in the morning to take their kids to school. And maybe they're not able to engage with their student as much as they'd like to because they're trying to make sure they have a roof over their head and food on the table. And we continue to see that the cost for both of those pieces are rising, not only in our city, but definitely here as the city continues to grow. And so what I want to make sure that we're doing to address these issues of systemic poverty in our city is making sure that we are investing in real economic development that supports good-paying union jobs for our folks here in our city. Making sure that we are also bringing down housing costs by reducing our utility rate increases and making sure that our corporations and our large energy users are paying their fair share instead of our residents and other ways that we can reduce housing costs for our residents so they don't have to try to make double the income to pay a single rent.
Thank you, Mr. Galván. Now we'll hear from Ms. Vanessa Chavez.
Thank you for the question. So children that don't have adequate health insurance, they don't have adequate food in their homes, again, their parents work multiple jobs to make ends meet, they don't feel like they don't have anyone to reach out to, especially at school, maybe teachers aren't giving them what they need. Those are things that make children not succeed in school. So we as a city don't focus on our children when we create our bonds every five years. And maybe one of these five years, we can have a children's bond. And that's something that I've been thinking about, something that we can include, come from our city taxpayer dollars, to include our children in our bonds. Yes, our infrastructure's important. Yes, our code compliance issues are important. All of the other things are important, but without focusing on kids and our community, we are not going to get far with bringing those star scores up and making sure our kids get to college and do well in life. Thank you.
Ms. Lawson-Alanis-Pacaso.
So I've been talking as a mom, but I actually want to talk as the oldest daughter of my mom who was born with congenital heart defect. And a lot of times, we had to choose between whether we were going to keep the lights on and put food on the table or she was going to be able to pay for the prescription that she needed in order to live. Those were real struggles and those are real struggles that I know families still deal with today. I was an advocate for the Food Bank and for Feeding America where I worked with the White House as well as other advocates across the US where we saw kids hated summer because they did not, in long breaks, because they did not have access to food and they're hungry. Were going to school hungry. And you know, we're talking about opportunities for the city. The mayor has a mayor's youth council. We really should be tapping them to figure out what are these resources or their lived experiences and how can we really cultivate and again, bring other networks together to really champion, to support them. Because we have such, I always say, a red line today is just a zip code. We're not doing enough to ensure that we are bridging the gap in disparity and breaking the cycle of generational poverty.
Ms. Alanis-Pacaso. Now we'll go to Mr. Bobby Herrera.
I agree with, I won't say colleagues, but future candidates. Education is important, especially in high school. I feel that it'll bring back trade schools. Deck up programs where these kids can work half-day, go to school half-day, and still get credit for it. But again, it's all up to the teachers, the school boards to initiate it. The city can actually go to them and advocate for that, but again, these kids that are just going home and have nothing to do, they need to get involved in school functions, PTAs or sports activities. I do high school football, I'm a referee. I've seen it on the field where kids actually curse at me and I'm a white cap. And I said, "Whoa." When they start cursing at me and I said, "What are these coaches teaching them?", it all starts there. What are we teaching our kids? We're teaching them all the wrong things. If they can go to us, we're on the field and they're arguing with them.
Now we'll hear from Gerald, Mr. Gerald Lopez.
Thank you. You know, for the past two years, actually three years, I've been mentoring. I mentored two students at Saul Ross Middle School, a sixth grader and a seventh grader. And one of the things that I've found in one of his roles as a sixth grader, now actually seventh grader, his role is taking care of his younger brothers and sisters because mom has to work. Dad is, I mean, it's a single family, a single mom with five boys and they're hungry. So his role is having to be an adult for the younger siblings. Mentorship is most important. As a council member, I'm going to focus heavily on mentoring. I'd like to create a mentorship program that focuses in on these schools that would allow for those children that are struggling, that need help and need good people to be able to show them the way and empathize and understand what they're going through.
Now we will hear from LaShonda for closing statements.
Good evening, everyone. My name is LaShonda and I have four scholars at IDEA Waltham. We want to thank all of our candidates for their insightful answers tonight and for letting us learn more about them, their campaign, and vision for education here in District Six and San Antonio. We want to give candidates 30 seconds each to offer some closing remarks and share with us why we should vote for them. I think I have. Oh. Okay. Ms. Lawson-Pacaso.
Thank you guys so much for this. I will say, I am so grateful for the commentary and the questions that we've received and again, thank you so much for coordinating this for us to have this opportunity. There's eight of us running, which means we obviously understand that there is a need for the right leadership. We need somebody who can balance their lived experiences with their professional experiences of understanding what it is to actually do the job. We need to have somebody who knows how to look at a multi-billion dollar budget as people first, people driven. We need somebody who knows how to be stubborn and ask the questions to hold our city dollars accountable and I'm ready to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Alanis-Pacaso. Now we hear from Mr. Bobby Herrera.
Bobby Herrera, I just want everybody to know that I come from a military background family. I myself, again, was there. But what we're trying to emphasize here, every candidate is qualified to run for this office, everybody up here. But we're trying to tell all of you all, no matter who you select, we're going to support them all the way around. We have to work together, not against each other. It's togetherness and communication.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Gerald Lopez.
You have a tough choice, just like Bobby says. We're all here to help you. We're all here to approve our district and to improve our city. For me, education is the foundation of my campaign. That's what I focused on and that's what I believed in and I will continue to focus on that. What's most important is experience matters. When I'm knocking on the doors and I'm talking to the residents and the voters, they're wanting to know, "What have you done?" And I tell them.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Experience matters.
Now we hear from Kelly Alanis Gonzalez.
You have a choice to make, District Six. You can choose me, a fighter who has built her career fighting alongside working families. I'm not here to play politics. I'm here to fight, to fight for your families, to fight for your children, and to make sure that we get the resources that we need in our communities, not just to survive, but to thrive. I am born and raised here in this district. I am a fighter and I am here to fight for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Now we hear from Carlos Antonio Raymond.
Primero, quiero dar las gracias a todos ustedes por estar aquí y sus preguntas. La Spanish.
It is Spanish.
Okay, now the question here is, who among these great candidates here has the best resume to lead San Antonio City Council District Six into the future? I want you to think about that. I came from a very poor background and I'm in San Antonio to help make sure that no child left behind. And if there is a child out there that feels that they don't belong because of failing in high school, I want to assure them that just because you're failing in high school, you don't have to fail in life.
Mr. Raymond, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Gonzalez, go ahead.
Thank you all again.
Sorry, and I'm calling you Gonzalez because I'm reading it on my paper and I know it says Rick Alván and we've had a conversation report.
Thank you all so much again for hosting tonight and thank you all for coming out. With my experience growing up in the district, serving as a neighborhood leader and delivering for residents while working at city hall, I believe that together, we can ensure that our city is a safe, affordable, and quality place to live in for generations to come. I, Rick Alván, hope I can count on your vote this May, on May 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We made it through. I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so I come from a career, I have 30 years of experience working in the city of San Antonio locally, with our community, in the grassroots, working with people, getting them through self-sufficiency programs, working in literacy programs. I was the ombudsman at SAHA. I know how to collaborate, I know how to provide recommendations that matter. I know when to fight hard and I know how to fight hard. I've worked for six council members. I will know how to walk in there that day and work that annual budget. I know about the bond, I know everything that a council member knows. Thank you.
Thank you. This job is not as easy as it looks and our team was very gracious to say that I would do better with the roll call. Thank you very much, candidates, for participating and for being respectful of each other. We appreciate your willingness to meet with the community and share your perspectives when it comes to being civically engaged and to building a better education experience for our students. We hope we can be partners in the community to help change the statistics and make sure that our children in our communities have the opportunities to succeed. We are committed to continuing our advocacy efforts to ensure we have access to quality education and equal opportunity. This work cannot be done alone. As parents and community members, we are ready to do our part, but we need you with us. This spring, San Antonians have a critical opportunity. We can elect new leaders- We can elect new leadership into District Six and across our great city. Let's make it clear tonight, our students' education matters because they are the future of this great city of San Antonio. We challenge each and every one of you to stay informed about what's on the ballot. Make a plan to vote on May 3rd. At this moment, I'm asking all 230 of you that came here tonight, through traffic, through all those hard things, to allot time for the importance, to make a commitment to vote. Remind your neighbors to vote. Remind each person, even if they cannot vote, that their voice can be heard. As a symbol of our commitment to students, teachers, public schools, and the future of our city, raise your program now to show that you are committed to this fight. This spring, let's stand together and elect education champions who will put our students first for a stronger, brighter San Antonio. Thank you for making the time to be informed, and thank you very much, candidates. This concludes our program tonight. As you walk out, don't forget to check on the winning numbers on the screen for your raffle prizes. We appreciate you, and please be safe. Gracias a todos por venir y mucho cuidado a la pasada de la casa.